Okay. Right.
Get any audio.
Coherency, I can't see.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I need to get that in.
He's not here to bring it on. Borrow.
Testing one, two, testing. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Waipahu Neighborhood Board meeting to order. First off, I would like to read out the rules of speaking. Anyone wishing to speak is to raise their hand and when recognized by the chair, to address comments to the chair. Speakers are encouraged to keep their comments under three minutes, and those giving reports are also urged to keep their reports under three minutes. Please silence all electronic devices at this time. And thank you. We'd like to start off with the introduction of the board members, starting with on my right.
Good evening, Annette Yamaguti at large.
Good evening, Marine Andrade at large.
Good evening, Richard O'Shro at large.
Aloha and good evening, Nathan Chang, Sub District Three.
Aloha, Jaten Chang, Sub District Three.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. Daryl Macha at large.
Good evening, Terry Tombaga, Sub District Three.
Good evening, Debbie Segal at large.
Good evening, Chad Domingo at large.
Good evening, Dave Beer, Sub District Two.
Good evening, Kevin Wilson for Sub District One.
Thank you, board members. For everyone in the audience, thank you for joining us. If you have a chance, please sign in on our roster sheets available on the table. Moving on to our first responders' reports, I'd like to call on the Honolulu Fire Department first.
Aloha, everyone. My name is Nate with the Honolulu Fire Department and the Waipahu Fire Station. We're just going to be going over some stats from the previous month and some fire safety tips. As far as fires, we had two structural fires. We had sixteen wildland and brush fires. We had seven nuisance fires and twelve activated alarms with no fires. As far as emergencies goes, we had 217 medical emergencies. We had one motor vehicle collision with pedestrian. We had five motor vehicle collisions without pedestrians and two hazmat incidents. As far as fire safety tips for this month, we're going to be focusing on smoke alarms. We want them to make them work for you. This year, the National Fire Protection Association's Fire Prevention Week campaign strives to educate everyone about the importance of having working smoke alarms in their home. For more information and resources, visit fpw.org. We want you guys to install smoke alarms in every bedroom, outside each separate sleeping area, like a hallway, and on each level of the home. I want you guys to test smoke alarms at least once a month by pushing a test button. And I want you guys to replace all smoke alarms when they are 10 years old or stop responding when tested. That is all from me. If you have any questions.
Thank you. Do I have any questions from the members of the board to the fire department? Any questions, comments? Any questions or comments from our audience to the fire department? Thank you, sir, for your report.
Thank you, yes.
Next on our agenda, the police department.
Aloha. I'm Lieutenant Keone Hong, representing District Three. Going over the stats for September is August. Motor vehicle thefts, there were fourteen in September compared to eleven. Burglaries, nine compared to three. Thefts, twenty-nine compared to thirty-six. Unauthorized entry to motor vehicles or car break-ins, there are fifteen compared to seventeen. And total calls for service for this area in September was 2,214 compared to 2,257. Additional stats can be found at our website at honolulupd.org. The safety tip of the month is Halloween is on Thursday, October 31st. Please make sure your children are visible and their costumes and masks fit well to avoid blocked vision or trip hazards. Also carefully check treats for tampering. I'm going to highlight one of the cases that involves the burglaries. So there's a little bit of an increase from September to August from nine, from three to nine. For this month, on October 17th, 2024, at around 11:10 PM, there was calls of commercial burglaries. The ones you see on TV where they either smash the rocks through the glass windows or just ram the car through in Mililani area. My counterpart, Lieutenant Uwasaki, who sometimes comes to these meetings, was proactively patrolling the Waipo area near Dave's Ice Cream and T-Presso, you know, that shopping center with the big city diner, Foodland. He observed a vehicle parked out of stall, kind of suspicious. As he approached, he observed four people jump into the vehicle and flee. He used the police radio for additional units, and then additional units was able to catch up to the vehicle on the freeway, went toward Foster Village. The vehicle eventually stopped, at which time all the occupants fled. However, because of the responding units, they all were apprehended. One adult male was arrested, 22-year-old male, and three juveniles, two 16-year-olds and one 15-year-old. They were subsequently arrested for resisting arrest. The vehicle was stolen, as well as five commercial burglaries. The adult was eventually charged and his bail was set at $500,000. So hopefully that curbs some of those smashing burglaries. If there are any questions, I'm available.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Do you have any questions from the members of our board? Member Andrade?
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, during nighttime, how many officers do you folks have in Waipahu City right now?
So the entire district or Waipahu?
Waipahu.
Waipahu, we have usually five.
Five?
Yes.
Okay, so we actually, I am the president of Village Park. And we changed security, yeah, we hire. So we've had a number of illegal fireworks. And on Wednesday last week, there was an illegal happening. We were celebrating somebody's 16th birthday. We called 911, okay? I walked there from my house, because I could see it from my house and approached them. And they were celebrating this kid's birth. And I reminded them about being using illegal fireworks. As we're talking, my security guard came. And the kids were actually more adults than the adults. You know, one of the parents told me to go home and watch Jeopardy. And I kind of giggled at that and I said, "You guys were concerned about this party versus you just disturbed a whole community, all the fireworks?" And it went on for like two minutes. And it was those illegal explosives and showers.
Yes.
And I said, "You know, your children are actually more apologetic than you are." And one of the parents was a nurse. And I explained to her, "This side of Village Park is zero lot land." As we're talking, the rubbish can got caught on fire and it was next to the two hedges, the neighbor and theirs. And I said, "If you guys went in the house and that thing caught on fire, we've tried to call police and people know about what happened in August, but there needs to be some kind of urgency, you know, that when we call, we don't call just because."
What happened? Did the police not show up or something? At all? Even though you said you would meet?
Nobody. I was there and the neighbor down the street.
What was the date? I can look it up because...
On Wednesday, last week, Wednesday.
Last week, Wednesday. Nighttime?
Night, about 8:30, quarter to nine.
It's very unusual that nobody showed up.
It's not because it's happened before where we called and we waited. I sat 43 minutes, right in the middle of a pyro exhibition.
So what I recommend is you did a great job in being a good witness. I wouldn't recommend approaching the people.
Yeah, people tell me that. My husband was not happy.
Yeah.
But if you don't come, somebody got to do the job.
Well, what I would do in the future is if the officers don't respond in a timely manner, call back.
I would be...
And ask for a supervisor. And me with the supervisor. Either you're going to be a sergeant or if the sergeant can't handle it, then it would be someone like myself or Lieutenant Uwasaki.
But we did have a bunch of people that did call 911 because as I was walking back, my neighbors down the street had said, "We called 911. We saw you walking up the street, we called."
Yeah, because fireworks violation is a little difficult, but if we have good witnesses like you, where you would be willing to write a statement.
And you know, our new security guard was actually there witnessing what I was seeing. And I was trying to be really, you know, cordial and telling them, "This is a warning." Now that...
Member, let's...
Okay.
Okay. Ask for a supervisor if it happens, but I'll look it up and then I'll try to figure out what happened.
All right.
If you can get back to us. If you need more information, Lieutenant, maybe you can pull a member on the side.
Okay.
Any further questions for our police department from the board? Or from our members of our audience? Have any questions or concerns that you wanted to bring attention to Lieutenant Hong since he's here? No? Thank you so much, Lieutenant. Next, first responder report, we'd like to invite our military report.
Aloha and good evening, Chairman, Board Members, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Lieutenant Colonel John Regnering. I'm with the 599 Transportation Brigade in the Plans and Exercises Office. It's a pleasure to be here and meet all of you in person. Here to deliver tonight's military report from US Army Hawaii. First issue is training advisory. US Army Garrison publishes a monthly Army Training Advisory. Remaining training this month are Ranger Tactics through tomorrow, October 25th. Training will occur on the East Range from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. An updated report will be published no later than November 1st. To receive the report, when it is published at the start of each month, request a copy via email at usag.hawaii.comrel@army.mil. Upcoming training event, JPMRC, the 25th Training Division, conducted a training exercise in coordination with the Joint Multi-National Radiance Center from October 7th to the 16th. We want to extend our gratitude to the community for their understanding earlier month as we managed to increase and increase in ground and air traffic. The ability to complete exercises with our multinational partners supports mission readiness and cooperation throughout the Pacific. Job Fair. US Army Garrison Hawaii will hold its next hiring fair on November 19th at Alam Manu Military Reservation Gym from 8:30 AM to 2:00 PM. This is open to the public. Advanced applicants may go to www.himwr.com to learn of openings and how to apply online. Welcome and should bring two references, proof of ID, social security card, and resume or application. This concludes my report. Unless you have some questions.
Do you have any questions from the members of our board or Lieutenant Colonel? His military report? Any questions? Any questions from our members of the audience? Thank you, sir, for your report.
Thank you for your time this evening.
Next item on our agenda is the resident and community concerns. Do you have anyone present, the resident? Please go to the podium and identify yourself.
Hi, good evening, everybody. We are with DHO JV. We're the contractors that are working on the Dry Dock Pro Harbor project. And there's a support facility. We're here today because there's a facility down by Waipo Soccer Field in the military area. So we're just here to provide an update on where we're at with the project. My name is Ricky Itagaki. I'm the Waipo Area Manager. And right now where we're at, we've completed the concrete floor unit for two units, two out of the nine units. These are large 4,000-ton units that are going to be floated across the harbor over to Pro Harbor. We are continuing to work on loading out pipe piles that get delivered by the water side. And we are offloading dredge material here shortly as well. And pretty much, we're going to be continuing. The main focus right now is offloading dredge material. And then we're going to be continuing to cast these large precast floor units. That's about all I had.
My name is Karen Winpenny. I'm the Public Relations Manager for DHO Joint Venture. As Ricky was mentioning, we've got things going into Waipo Peninsula. Just to make you aware, the most affected area is Waipo Access... So I'm sorry, Waipo Access Point Road. So all of those neighbors have been alerted. We have sent them notices and such. And this will go through for quite some time. But I do have information that I'm going to leave on the table for you folks. And please feel free at any time to call or email our hotline and I will respond within 24 hours unless, of course, it's an emergency, okay? Does anybody have any questions of us?
Do you have any questions for our... at this time? No questions. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your report. Later.
Aloha and good evening, everyone. This is David Souza and I'm with Island Topsoil. And I'm here to make an announcement that we are applying for a solid waste permit for Greenways Compost Facility located at 94880 Conne Road. Just here to announce.
Okay, if that's a fulfillment of your application, yeah?
Yes.
The announcement.
The announcement, yes.
But our board is not, will not do any action for you, right? You just had to...
Had to make an announcement, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Do you have any more resident concerns, community concerns?
Aloha. My name is Sherry Hauser. I'm employed at the Hilton Hawaiian Village. I've been employed for 18 years. The Hilton Hawaiian Village is a unite here local five union. Our union contract is up. We've tried months of negotiating, unsuccessful. Eighteen hundred of us workers walked off our jobs September 24th. So today is day number 31 with our labor dispute. It's hard work. We're walking back and forth chanting, singing, picketing. There's a lot of financial disparity at this time, but it takes a village to come together and we march in solidarity. Hilton, just educational-wise, is no longer owned by Hilton family. It's owned by a company called Park Hotel and Resorts. They're a mainland real estate company that cherry picked 41 premium properties from Hilton to Hyatt to Marriott. They are a revenue profit for their shareholders. Park took advantage of us after COVID with cuts to staffing, guest services, perks, amenities, cuts that affected our workload in all departments. And it jeopardizes our safety and our working environment. Every day, thousands of us hospitality workers struggle to get ahead. We can't provide the same level of service our guests deserve, our guests pay for. We're fighting for a livable wage, permanent layoffs to be restored. We're overworked, understaffed, and undervalued. We're asking our community, time, friends, relatives, not to cross our picket line, no staycations, parties, events. Instead, please support our local working class and the families of this island community. These struggles are real to us and, you know, we're facing our fifth week pretty soon. And we just, all the support we can get, we'd appreciate from our community. We do have a hardship fund. We've had people do food drives for us. We've had, you know, come out, bring some water, walk with us. We've got a lot of community support from the political, some of the, you might have seen it on the news as well. So, you know, all the help we can get, we'd love that. And we, I would just like to show this to our audience. It's a hardship fund, you know. As time goes on, you know, every little bit can help. But thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it. Mahalo.
Thank you. I know many of our residents here, our constituents here in Waipahu, do or are members of our union. So thank you for sharing that message. Any other resident or community concerns at this time? Any from the board? Members of the board, do you have any community concerns? We do have a presentation. Unfortunately, it's possible that they are in traffic. If it's okay with the board that we postpone this until they do arrive tonight, if it's okay on our agenda. Okay? Okay, moving on in our agenda, board. We have five at-large seats that are vacant at this time on our board. Are there any residents interested in filling a vacant board seat at this time? I'd like to ask again, any residents looking to fill a vacant board seat at this time? No? Thank you. We'll defer for our next meeting as well. We do have quorum, so I would like to ask the board to look over the minutes. Hope everyone had a chance to review the minutes. Do you have any corrections to the minutes? Board member, go ahead.
Yes, on the July 25th, 2024 minutes, page three, under Council Member Val Okimoto, correction to spelling of should be James with an S. No other corrections for the July minutes.
Thank you.
Oh, Jamie. Oh, it is spelled correctly. Thank you for the correction. My apologies. Strike that.
Okay.
But I do also have a spelling correction for a name on the September minutes on page two, under Presentation for Queen's Health Systems, Dr. Sandra Leigie Brandon. Correct spelling of Leigie is L-E-I-G-G-I. And there are three areas for correction for that spelling.
Okay.
No other corrections for September.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other corrections to the meeting minutes for both July and September? Hearing none. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes pending the change, the correction?
A motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Any oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, board. Oh, right on. Perfect timing. I'd like to welcome Mr. Joey Manahan, Director Laurie. Oh, she's not here. Okay, Mr. Joey Manahan for our presentation update.
Aloha, everybody, and good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, and to the members of the board. My name is Joey Manahan. I now work for the Honolulu Authority for Rapid Transportation. And I'm sorry that Laurie couldn't be here tonight. She had a conflict. But I'm here to discuss the Waipahu Makai entrance. I didn't really have a presentation, but I'm here to answer any questions that we may have. And maybe I'll just start off by saying that I had to notify the, our local area elected officials that the Hartboard had a recent meeting in September, had a discussion about the Waipahu Makai entrance. And they were kind of throwing around the idea about deferring the entrances construction. And that's due to the, our recent contract for the city center guideway and stations coming in a little bit higher than we would have liked. But I'm here to say tonight to the board and to everybody here that we are committed to building it. It hasn't been deferred. There's been no action to defer it by the board or by us in the administration internally. There's been, it's still in our budget and it's, that budget was approved by the board and the city council. So, you know, we just have to go through basically a process. When the bids come in higher than we would like or if they come in over the estimates... we basically have to justify our funding and that we will be able to continue our scope with all our partners, including the FDA. And so there's a process that we have to go through, basically we have to update our risk model, run the data through a risk model and then demonstrate that we have the money to continue with, you know, the proposed projects that are on the books. But basically, we just have to justify it to them because we have a new recovery plan and amended recovery plan that is pretty hard to do. Literally took an act of Congress and so we just have to go through these steps. But if there's anything I would like to be clear about tonight, and I'd like the board and the community to take away, is the message that we, we are very committed to building it and it has not officially been deferred. And you know, if we can help that, we're not going to do that, so.
Thank you, thank you for the report, do you have any questions, board member Oshiro?
That's not really an update, when you say it's not been really deferred, so what is its status? Is it still on the?
Yeah, so.
Is it still proceeding because last year they said the budget was approved for it, so?
We are.
Question is, is it on the shelf right now or is it not? I mean, you said it's not deferred, so what is its status?
Yeah, so there's been no official action to defer it, I mean, it's just a consideration right now if we have to, you know, make room in the current budget. But let me just say that the, the design work is ongoing. And you know, we haven't, nothing stopped as far as, you know, what we're doing internally. There's, you know, we're still proceeding, so there's been no defer, moving on the design work for the station. And we, you know, we have good support for it also as well on the board, right? I mean, just us who wants it in heart and I know the community, it's very important to our community here. But also the members of the board understand, you know, that it is important.
Related question is this. The contract came in $300 million over what you had projected.
Yes.
So is it because we had only one bidder, so Hart accepted that bid? And it had, because Hart said it fell within the parameters of what they had expected, although it came in $300 million over?
Yeah, well, no, you know, I, I wasn't part of the evaluation committee or part of the procurement. We just, you know, I, and I don't know how much of that played into it, that they were the only bidder, but you know, they, I think we negotiated as much as we could. And you know, we basically took it down as far as we could go.
But the bid was accepted.
We did award it at 1.66, yes.
The other question related to this, since we're in the same ballpark in terms of 300 million. Tula Parini, the contractor, offered the city or told the city that build, finish the rail project all the way to Ala Moana for $325 million. So at this point, why would Hart reject that or say, you know, they don't want to consider that now? Because it seems that, you know, that's pretty far away. So if they're going to lock you into an amount, why wouldn't you pursue it? Or get some kind of memorandum of understanding to lock that in? Because you can be assured that if you try to continue to Ala Moana and Ms. Kai Kina said that's what she really wants to do, continue to Ala Moana, to finish the project, why wouldn't you spend more time looking at that $325 million proposal? Because it sounds like if you can lock that in today, it's going to be much less costly if you waited any amount of time, so can you respond to that?
You know, I'll probably have to take that to the folks, but by understanding that 300 million for two Ala Moana, it's just a very, very, it's a base cost, it's, 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 it's a very, you know, there's not, there's, there's a lot of things that aren't considered in there and it's probably going to go a little bit. So we're still kind of weighing that and we just want to make sure that currently, you know, we, we can proceed with the current scope with the, that's in the amended recovery plan.
I didn't unfortunately answer the question, but I think, yeah, that's something you can really.
I can think, I can think that back, sure.
The status of, you know, that proposal and I hate to see that go away when the contractors said they can continue. And if you stop at the civic center and they just wrap up and leave, start it over again to, if you found the money to go to Ala Moana, it's just like Waipahu and that entrance. We were talking about this when they were still not quite finished with that stop. And we said, why don't you just do that entrance when you're still constructing that station? But look what happened, they closed it up and now it's going to cost over $13 million. And if this is going to be delayed further, it's probably going to cost even more. So you don't, at this time, have an estimate of what that entrance is going to cost, or do you?
Actually, I do right now, right now, we're estimating it about, it's about 20 million to build the, to build the Makai Entrance. I'd say that's, that's on the high, the high estimate.
So, you know, we were told it was 13 million, so now it's 20 million, so that's what I mean.
No, it's a.
Cost keep increasing, so when you have a chance to possibly pin down a cost that may be quite low at this time, I don't see why Hart doesn't do that.
Well, the last time I checked, it's about 60 million, yes.
Thank you, member.
But, but can I, can I just respond to that real quick? So, so yeah, so I understand that in the previous administrations, they did value engineer that out, right? Because we didn't have enough money originally before we had the recovery plan. But you know, we, actually it was Laurie and back then it was council member Elefante. And you know, we, we kind of committed to it. And so we didn't kind of commit, we committed to it and, and we, you know, she, she actually put it back in. And she, she made it, she put it back into the project, basically. And it's not in the scope right now, it's not in the current scope, but it's, it's, it's an elective and we still want to deliver on it. So there's other ways to, to, to deliver it, it's still in the budget right now. If, if push comes to shove, we, we have other strategies to repackage it and, and put it back in. So I, I'm confident that we, we will, that we will deliver on that.
We have another question, member Chang.
Sure. Just an update on the railway, the guideway to the airport. Are we still on target to have that come online, I believe it was end of next year.
End of next year, yes, so, so late next.
Sorry.
Thank you very much for that question, yes, so we're scheduled to open end of next, we're, we're in the, we're testing phase right now and working, working our way towards trial running. So, yeah, you can see the trains now, they're, they're actually moving on the, by themselves on the track.
Thank you, any more questions from our board members? Hearing none, new members of the audience have any questions real quick? None, thank you so much for your update and the report and yes, we look forward to, for you to come back out and.
Sure, I'll respond before our next meeting, I can respond to Mr. Oshiro's question regarding the 300 million, I can email you folks.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, next, in our agendas are elected officials, I'd like to call on Mayor Rick Blangiardi's representative. And we have Director Roger Babcock.
Good evening, board members, Roger Babcock, Department of Environmental Services. Thanks for having us here tonight, I have a handout that I'll pass up to you. Okay, so the, as far as I know, there's no, no follow-up from, from the last meeting. The mayor's highlights handout is available, it has a little story about an update of, of the rail system and fact that it's been in operation now for a year. And it has some other interesting, interesting topics in there. What I handed out to you is a, is about the upcoming increase in sewer fees. That has been in the news and will be in the news more. And so this is to give you an update on this and see, and answer any questions that you have or the public as well. So the sewer services are provided by Environmental Service Department along with Refuge Services. And the, but the sewer part of it is a, is an enterprise service. So it exists only on the sewer fees that you pay, residents pay and businesses pay monthly. So it's a, an enterprise fund, which means it doesn't, it's not allowed to tap into property taxes and/or the city cannot use the, use the funds for any purpose other than sewer. And so what that means is that the sewer fund needs to be self-sustaining. So the sewer fees need to be set such that it covers all the costs of the, of the enterprise. So the sewer fees were last increased in 2016, July 1st of 2016, so that's eight years. And so the city is now proposing to increase sewer fees beginning July 1st of next year. So it will have been nine years at that time. The last sewer increase, fee increase was on that in 2016 and it was 8%. So overall, the city is proposing a 10-year sewer rate package. It's described, it's described in this handout, this handout is available for anybody in the public as well. It's on the website, city's environmental services website, which is honolulu.gov/env for environmental services. And there's a banner at the top which links this on a press release. But basically, it's 10-year rate package. There are two important things related to affordability as part of this package. One is a shift in the way the bill is calculated to have a greater emphasis on the amount of water that's used in order to reward water conservation and have a much bigger impact on the bill, on how much you pay. And the other is a low-income customer assistance program that is new and is to be funded at $10 million per year for low-income folks that qualify. The, so a little bit more about the, why we have to do this. As I mentioned, the fees haven't been increased in a long time and the, however, have continued to increase over, over time, everything from electricity and fuel and salary and wage and all other consumables associated with the operation. In addition, construction costs have increased and there's also some very large construction projects, one in particular that needs to be completed by 2035. And that's the final phase of the 2010 consent decree, which is a federal court judgment which mandated the city to do three big projects and over a 25-year period, from 2010 to 2035. And we're, we finished the first two, this year the second one was finished. And what remains is to finish the project, which construction has started, but it's a $2.5 billion project and only a small part of that has been started and funded. The, and it's part of an overall capital program of construction projects that are needed between today, 2025 and 2040, that 15-year period, there's $10.1 billion of construction that's needed. Partly it's the consent decree, partly it's upgrade of existing systems, replacement of old infrastructure, preparation for sea level rise and storm and climate change, as well as mandated updates due to regulations changing. So there's a lot of projects that have to happen. And that, and a schematic showing those, that the construction projects is shown on the, is shown on the flyer. So what are the increases? The increases are 9% per year, increase each year 9% for the six years. And then in the years after that, it goes 8, 7, 6 and 5. So that gets us out for a full decade. And the reason for that is that the Sand Island, final phase of the consent decree is Sand Island Waste Retreatment Plant, it needs to be done by 2035. So the rate increases get to a point where it completes that project. And the, just briefly, the part about changing the fee structure, the way the fee structure works now is the basic form's not going to change, but there's a base charge and there's a volumetric charge. The base charge is a fixed fee, it's the same for every single-family resident and multifamily and, and also non-residential. And then there's a volumetric charge, which is based on how much water you use from the Board of Water Supply. And there's a per thousand gallon charge. The, currently for the average customer, the total bill is $110, so that's for your average water user. So $77.55 of that is the base charge and that hasn't changed again since 2016. That's the base charge and then so for the average user, the volumetric charge is only $33. So the, the change that we're doing is to, is to change the ratio of the base charge to the volumetric charge. So the base charge will become only 50% of the bill instead of 70% that it is today. So what that means is that right now, if you conserve water a lot, it doesn't make too much difference in your bill. But when it changes to 50/50, conserving water will make a much bigger difference in, in your bill. And so that's kind of illustrated in the, in the table that's in there, I'm sorry for you folks that don't have this handout, but what you see is that the fixed charge really doesn't change for the first, for the first four years. So it basically stays the same as it is now, but the volumetric charge goes up. So that is allow, gives you more control over your bill. Right now you have little control because it's mostly a fixed charge. There are some people who do not respect water from Board of Water Supply, so we don't have water data and they just pay a fixed fee every month, just one number, doesn't matter how much water they use because we don't know how much water they use. So they're paying that $110.89, so there's, we have thousands, a few thousand customers like that that don't get water from Board of Water Supply. But anyway, the, the other thing is our CARES program, Customer Assistance for Residential Environmental Services. And we're proposing that that would be a, based on income, qualify no more than 80% of area median income and then be eligible for a $20-$25 per month reduction on your fixed, fixed charge. So that would be the way we want to try and address affordability. And so if there's any questions about that or anything else, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions from our board, member Oshiro?
Director Babcock, I have a question, since a lot of this infrastructure that you have to build in the next decade is regulatory in nature, is that correct?
That's correct.
You have to comply with, I think, federal requirements. So if that's the case, aren't there any federal monies that you can go after to help perhaps reduce the costs? Before, you know, the big increases hit, I mean, this is a large increase. I mean, nobody today get wage increases of 9% a year, you know, as hotel workers, they don't get 9%. I don't know if anybody does, except maybe the dockworkers, but you know, that's a different group altogether. But the thing is, if this, this is a huge cost, obviously. So are there any federal funds out there available to help with these infrastructure costs? I don't see that anywhere in your, you know, presentation, so.
Yeah, thanks for asking. I did want to mention first that, that you're right, part, part of the increase is, is salary and wages typically, city workers are getting about 4% per year. There's an additional, built into all these numbers is inflation. Currently, you know, in the first couple of years it's about 4% and then it's 3%, you know, the rest of the years. So we have to account for inflation in all of our estimates. But, but you're right, so we do get federal funds. So recently, so we always get federal funds, it comes from the EPA, EPA through the State Department of Health and then to us. And we, in recent years, we've been getting about $55 million a year, which is a little over 10%, you know, of our, of our budget. And so that is, that's very important, you know, to the program. Sometimes, some years we get more, some years we get a little less, it really depends on the federal allocations. And so we, we actively track that and get what we can. The really big federal wastewater infrastructure funding. The really big federal wastewater infrastructure funding was really a long time ago. It was in the mid 70s. At that time, the government would pay for 75% of eligible projects with federal funds. And in order to get that money, the state had to agree to fund 50% of the remainder. So counties and residents end up paying 12 and 1/2 to 15%. But today, that money is all gone. So there are these programs like the one that we tapped into, but that's about what as much as we can get for 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 our projects.
Thank you. Number Inchan.
So the question I had was kind of around keeping it affordable for the residents, especially here in Waipahu. So we are lucky that we have larger lots because we're an older neighborhood, which requires us to use more water for it because of the cost of living. A lot of people have home veggie farms. You know, my neighbor has their entire yard is is a vegetable garden. They have no ability to curtail their water usage. That's how they supplement their income for their family's food. I see a 20% irrigation credit. Was there any thought of maybe increasing that in some areas based on lot size? Because it's, you know, couple A zero lot, they don't use a lot of water to keep their lawns green. But here, we use quite a bit in Waipahu.
Yeah, thanks for that question. So, you know, the 20% has been, in fact, you know, for a long time, and it was based on studies from probably a long time ago, taking an average for the entire, you know, the entire island. So you come up with one number. And it is a credit, you know, that's renewed, you know, it's an assumption that you're going to perhaps use 20% of the water. If you use less than that for irrigation or none, don't irrigate at all, you're still getting the 20% credit, and that's just the way it works. There is a program for folks who use more water than the 20%, and it's for residential and non residential, mostly multifamily take advantage of it, townhouses and stuff, where there's a lot of irrigation. And that's a sub metering program, and that's that's been in effect for a long time. Single family can use it, multifamily, anything. And what happens then is a the the customer has to install the meter, which measures irrigation water directly. So you've got somewhere where your sprinklers are connected to, you put a meter on that. And then you have to read that meter, though, and report it each month, you know, to to us. And then that then the 20% this and whatever the actual percent is, is what's then billed. And we have hundreds of single family, I believe it's 300 and something, that have that. I mean, that doesn't sound like very many out of 150,000, but it is some who perhaps have very large yards and are doing a lot of irrigation, and they figured out that it's important to, you know, to get that the correct credit. We have also hundreds of the multifamily ones that are, you know, that are on the program because they realize that they can, you know, have a savings. The intention is that we are really only charging you for how much sewage you're putting into the system, you know. So that's why that, you know, the credit exists as well as the ability to do the metering. That's a successful program. I mean, there is some upfront costs. You got to put the meter in. We're not going to give you the meter. And then you do have to go through the exercise of reading it every month. We don't read it. We don't question it. It, you know, you just it's a it's not our system. We take the we take the data and we calculate the the correct bill based on that. So hopefully, that answers. And it's in ordinance, you know, it exists, it's a program, everybody's entitled to it if you want to use it.
Thank you. Any members from my left have any questions or Director Babcock? Member Andrade?
Okay, I'm going to take you off this subject.
Okay.
We received a complaint regarding the the river Stern in Waipahu.
Okay.
So there's a homeowner that have actually filed a complaint and wanted to know. I actually called Jean Albano.
Okay.
And reported that the river on the city side, the homeless has made just a mess. And so his backyard, and he wants me to give you his name and phone number because he wants to speak to you.
Okay.
But his backyard is where the the bank is.
Yeah.
And so from where the bridge is, there's a homeless camp that has piled trash in that first home. And Mr. Fergarigan's house is about four or five houses down into the homes. And he is very just very upset because the city hasn't gone in there. I talked to Jean about three weeks ago, I want to say, and he said, I have it on the underwear, you know, the radar, and I guess you folks would have to get a crew down there. But he hasn't heard anything. He hasn't seen anything. And so we can go outside, and I can give you his number and stuff, but he doesn't want to talk to you.
Sure. He wants to talk to me.
He wants you to call him.
Okay.
Yeah. So I'll go ahead and.
Yeah, you can or you can call me, email me, give me the.
Yeah, I think I'd rather do that now because it's so hard to get a hold of you.
Yeah, it can be hard. So, yeah, the, you know, there could be the, it's not SPO, right? Because it's not on, it's not on.
It's actually all the way down to the river because the water, there's no water down there. It's just, it's just pimping. But, you know, it goes across the bridge, and that side is side, from what I understand, it's separated, right? So on the other side is where Plantation Village is and Waipahu Elementary School is. And that's even over 17.
Yep.
Thank you.
Challenge, homeless encampments are a big challenge.
Yeah, but he just wants to make sure that if it rains, because it's going to become a rainy season, and the last time it overflowed onto Waipahu Street.
Any other questions for Mayor's Rep? Hearing none, thank you so much. Thank you for your report as well. Next, do I have a member or representative for councilmember Matt Wire?
Aloha Chair and members of the board, Kelly Anaya from Councilmember Matt Wire's office. Just a couple of things we wanted to highlight. Councilmember was able to participate in HPD's Coffee with a Cup and meet the major. I believe that was last week at the Waikela Community Association office. It was a valuable opportunity to engage directly with Major Platt as well as the D3 community policing team. Couple legislative updates. Bill 40, which relates to the self certification for the solar permit passed third reading. And both, well, this bill will both simplify to install rooftop solars and reduce the backlog at regarding the permitting process. Bill 42 regarding legalizing certain fireworks passed third reading against councilmembers no vote. Councilmembers' main concern with this was the measure was potential was a potential risk for wildfires, as well as HFD's presentation of data on human injury and fire risks. Resolution 24213 provides recycling receptacles in city parks and recreational facilities has passed out of council and been adopted. Councilmember would like to thank the Youth Commission for spearheading this measure. Bill 52 relating to e-bike regulation passed second reading. Bill 46 regarding the empty homes tax has also passed second reading. Councilmember encourages everyone to continue to provide feedback on ways the bill could be adjusted to better serve the community. And then lastly, Bill 47, the Aina Kapuna tax relief, as well as Bill 45, which increases the low income threshold to $100,000 tax credit bill, has passed second reading. That's all the updates I have tonight. If anyone has questions for councilmember.
Thank you, Kelly. Do I have any questions for councilmember Matt Wire, representative from our board? Member Andrade?
Just really quick, thank you for always answering us right away. I really appreciate you.
Thank you for your support of Councilperson's office.
I do have some constituents very interested in regards to Bill 46, so we'll be making some comments to councilmember.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, okay.
Yep. Next, our representative from councilmember Val Okamoto.
Good evening, Chair and board. Thank you for having me. My name is Aaron Wilson. I'm with the Office of Councilmember Val Okamoto. I was going to say a lot more, but I think the other representative took my took my thing. But we do have a resolution 24 dash 242. It's addressing the increase in property insurance premiums and instability in the property insurance marketplace. That measure passed out of MLaw and is headed to full council on November 7th, if you want to submit testimony for that. Bill 51, the adaptive reuse, see amending the revised ordinances on a lose safely and sustainability, increase supply of housing by allowing the adaptive reuse of existing commercial buildings that pass out and is going to full council on the 7th of next month as well. Today, we had this whole week, we had committees, and today we had our public safety hearing. We had an informational briefing on EMS, their billing, retention, and unit closures that have been happening. I'm happy to take any questions back.
Do I have any questions for councilmember Okamoto's representative from the board? Seeing none, thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Next, representative from our Agi Toba.
Well, Chair, board members, Aaron Michael Hall here, community liaison from the Office of Councilmember Agi Toba. The council is on a flight right now with his wife, so that's why he couldn't be here. But I did distribute his his bulletin to all of you, and there's extra copies on the back table should you desire. Earlier this month, as part of our ongoing Win Back Waipahu program, the councilmember walked the community with some of the local business owners on either side of Farrington Highway from Tanyoka's and East Medical down to, what was that, Highway Inn? And further collaborations with them are in the works for or in hopes of activating the areas and addressing some of the social and public safety issues in that neighborhood. Last week, we returned to the Hans Laranj area for a community workday and park beautification. Thank you, board member Tombaga, for coming out and helping us that day. And then later this winter, the councilmember has his has his eyes set on graffiti in our community. So in preparation of a future event, we are asking if the public can, if you see graffiti, if you can snap a picture and then send it to us either on Instagram or by email with a specific location of where that is, we're trying to compile a authoritative list on the graffiti in Waipahu whenever for for a mass cleanup, a mass graffiti paintout day shortly to come later this winter. So you can either direct message the councilmember at Agi Toba HNL on Instagram or at AgiTobaHNL.gov. And with that, I will take any questions.
Do I have any questions? Member Andrade?
That red van, Hans Laranj Park, is there. I just passed it, and they're now parked where the vet is.
Okay.
Yeah. So before I came here, we passed through there, and it's there.
Thank you.
Any other questions for councilmember Toba's representative? No questions. I do have just a quick concern, and I just remembered it from a constituent because I saw the picture of the DMV registration. One constituent told me that, you know, it's super convenient to have them in in various areas in in like Fulan. But I think they tend to break down. So, you know, multiple times you go there, and when it's when it is working, the line is like crazy. So if we can kind of, I don't know, if we can maybe see why they breaking down, is it because I I hope I hope that it's not because it ran out of the paper, and that's why it's not being used. But we can check on that, Aaron. Thank you.
Is there a specific locations?
A Fulan in Waipio.
Okay. Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a, oh, she is here, yep, representative from Governor Green's office?
Aloha, Kako. I'm Shavani Ramos. I am Governor Green's representative and also Public Information Officer for the Department of Labor and Industrial Relations. The governor's newsletter is available on his web on governor.hawaii.gov. And some of the highlights for this month is you'll learn about the Department of Defense's initiatives to support a community, the successful conclusion of the Maui Economic Recovery Commission led by the Department of Business, Economic Development, and Tourism. And UH also conducted an important Maui wildfire exposure study and launched a survivor registry. And also, as of this week, the governor, in regards to the governor's Kahale program, 16 Kahale have been built across the state so far with five more on the way. And earlier this month, governor signed the Ninth Emergency Proclamation relating to affordable housing and bolstering efforts to build more than 13,000 affordable housing units for working class families over the next three years. And lastly, for updates, my department, DLR, is hosting a job fair on November 22 from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. in our building at 830 Punch Bowl Street. So if you are interested in about the department, or if you have friends and family that are interested in exploring state government, come on down. And yeah, and I will be happy to take any questions relating to if you have questions for the governor or even my department.
Do I have any questions for Rep. from the board? Member Sher.
Thank you. I just had a question about, you see the governor's initiative to build 13,000 units. Are they tracking, I mean, the housing agencies, obviously, are they tracking the problems that some of these projects have faced where they build a 20 story portable housing building, and they can't rent it out? I mean, the rents are supposedly low, but they can't get tenants to fill them. They have a hard time getting people to actually rent these out. And, you know, they have a lot of people that go into the lot for these units, and, you know, they exceed the amount of units they have, but at the end, they seem to drop out. So you're going to be building more of these units. How are you going to address the problems that they currently have where they build the affordable units, but they can't rent them out, especially, you know, these rentals?
Okay, I'll I'll take that back, and I'll probably report back before the meeting, and I'll email you.
Thank you. Member Andrade?
Arbor Care Connection in Waipahu. A lot of people have been trying to get a hold of them, and they are not answering their phones. Is that office still open? Can you find out? Because it's there's been a lot of complaints about not answering the phone, and there's this is where parents can get assistance for childcare.
Sorry, member, can you report, repeat? Who was that?
Arbor Childcare Connection. It's an office that used to be, I think they're still there, because the the phone rings, but nobody answers the phone, and they've been to get assistance.
Okay, I'll look into that. I, yeah.
Any members from my left have any questions for Governor's Rep? Thank you, Shavani, for joining us. I do see a report from Senator Aquino. Do I have a representative and and, okay, sorry, and a report from Senator Kidani? So next on our agenda is Representative Chan. Thanks for joining us this evening.
Evening, Chair, board members. I don't have a report, but I'm here. But my report will be really short. I just want to just mention three things. So the first thing is, the Waipahu Oloha Clubhouse had a grand reopening yesterday. So I just want to give a shout out to the staff and also volunteers who helped repaint and really make that facility really nice. They hosted all members from the other clubhouses and and staff. So if you haven't had a chance to go down and take a look, it looks really, really nice. The second thing is, I wanted to also give a shout out to Ms. Sheri Ten, who is a Waipahu High School teacher in the Academy of Natural Sciences. She was named the 2025 Waipahu Pearl City Complex Teacher of the Year. So I know she doesn't like to get the shout outs, but I'm just giving her one anyway. And the last thing is, I want to mention is, earlier this month, Governor Green released $2.5 million, which was in last year's budget for Waipahu High School, to do some repainting and resurfacing of the classrooms and buildings. So if you had a chance to drive by the gym, it looks really nice, but the rest of the buildings, you know, need that same kind of facelift. And so it's part of the whole initiative to sort of make the campus a lot nicer and brighter and cleaner, and just it's the initiative to just show a lot more pride. So if you have gone down to the high school, you'd see a lot more murals and things. and things like that that students have created. So hoping that 2.5 million can really make Waipahu High School shine. But that's really all I want to report. So with that, I'll take any questions the board may have.
Thank you, Representative. Any questions for Representative Chan? Glenn, member?
Yes, I don't know if this, if you're the person to address this, but Waipahu has been having real problems with Hawaiian Electric. Our power has been going out two or three times. Like, yesterday was out for four and a half hours. I don't know who to really contact. If you try and call Hawaiian Electric, forget it already. So I don't know, I wonder if you could find out something about it, Corey?
Okay. Yeah, so I can check on that. So really, honestly, it's only when people complain to us that we know about it. So I know earlier this year, there was a real problem with the area in Waipio Gentry and Crestview. So I received a lot of complaints from that area. And it was because of a new switch that they put in. It was supposedly to put in for wildfire prevention, right? So it's a more sensitive surge, I guess, would be a surge protector where it would keep tripping. Because the lines in Waipio and Crestview were underground, but they weren't insulated. So they're causing a lot of trips. And what ended up happening was because of the power outages, HECO decided to just stop using that new technology until they could figure it out. And I don't know what the solution is because to replace all of the underground lines in Waipio and Crestview would just, you know, amount to millions and millions of dollars, so.
If you could find out anything about the latest lower Waipahu.
Yeah, let me check on that.
Let us know, thank you.
Because the other thing, too, I've learned from just working with, with the Waipio and Crestview areas is that every block may be on a different circuit. Or, so sometimes, you know, you'll see it where one side of the street, the power is out and the other side of the street, they still have power. And it's just because how the circuits were put in. So it's really good to let us know. Because, you know, unless we hear about it, we won't really necessarily know. And the HECO maps, and that's something I've asked HECO, too, is because when you look on their outage maps, it's really hard to determine, though. Just put like a stall or a shaded area, but when you think, yeah, street by street, it's not very accurate.
This was Harborview and Robinson Heights area. It wasn't in Village Park.
Do you know what day, yesterday? Okay.
Was the four and a half hours.
Okay, I'll go check on that.
Thank you, Member Yamaguchi. Any questions for Representative Chan from members on my left? Thank you so much, good to see you, sir.
All right.
To your report. I know Representative Lamusal submitted a report online. Do I have Representative from La Chica, Representative La Chica's office? Present? Seeing none, any Representative from Representative Perick's office? Seeing none. How about a Representative from US Representative Ed Case? Or US Representative Jill Takuta's office? Seeing none. Moving on, we'd like to welcome Board of Water Supply, Nikki. Thank you for coming.
Aloha, Chair, Board, residents, and guests. Nikki from Board of Water Supply. I have a quick report tonight, hopefully. There were four water main breaks in the Waipahu area in August. Sorry, in September. On September 4th, an eight-inch cast iron water main installed in 2004 broke at 94693 Farrington Highway. On the 17th, a 12-inch cast iron water main installed in 1962 broke at 94232 Leo Wahini Street. On the 27th, we had a six-inch water main installed in 1956 at 94947 Avamoko Place. And on the 28th, an eight-inch cast iron water main installed in 1960 broke at 94271 Ha Street. They've all been repaired at this point.
Quick, quick question. So that four water main breaks, one was a newer one, 2004?
Yeah.
Reasoning?
Um, I can get the reasoning for you. I don't have that top of my head.
Because we have Environmental Services asking for an increase in sewer fees when we have a 2004 pipe that's only 20 years old being repaired. I'd like to know how it was, that damage was caused, if possible.
Can do. Moving on to our announcements, we launched our 2025 poster and poetry contests. You all have a calendar from last year in front of you. Sorry, last year's winners, it's for next year, though. Our 2025 theme is Worth of Vi, and the poster contest is open to students in grades K through 6 and the poetry contest is grades 7 through 12. It doesn't matter if you are homeschooled or if you're, you're in a traditional brick and mortar. All students are welcome to enter. The deadline to enter is February 28th of 2025. And you can go to boardofwatersupply.com/wcwcontest for more information. All of the first, second, third, and honorable mention winners are in the calendars, so. It's pretty nice to have. And you guys, all of my boards are the first ones to get them. So consider yourself special. That concludes my report. So if there's any questions or concerns beyond the September 4th main break, I'm happy to take those back.
Thank you. Do I have any questions for Board of Water Supply from the board? Any questions? Thank you, Nikki, for joining us. Thank you for the calendar. I'll always look forward to the calendar.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay, next item in our agenda is OMPo, the Oahu Metropolitan Planning Organization Citizen Advisory Committee. Our member, Daniel DeGrasha, not here. Okay, well, I'll look out for his report on the next meeting. Do I have any reports from board members attending other meetings? None? I'd like to share an email from Departments of Parks and Recreation Core Committee since in regards to the Kapole City Lights. They're asking board participation in the holiday display at Kapole Hale. It is a request. And if anyone from our board would like to participate?
Are they supplying with the trees?
No, I don't think so, yeah.
Okay, just asking.
Okay. Okay, no interest. I'll have them report back. Announcements, our next regular meeting of our Waipahu Neighborhood Board for November is moved to the 3rd Thursday instead of 4th Thursday of November because of the Thanksgiving holiday. So our next meeting will be on November 21st. Okay, please mark your calendars. Other than that, I'd like to call our meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.